All right, thank you. I'll call the special call meeting of the City of Milton Council for Monday, August 21st to order. Stacy, roll call.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 22nd, 2019 special call meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight, today's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of an organized group or association, provided the individual has filed an notarized affidavit with the city clerk that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the county, the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Pro Tem Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Holmes.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cogherli.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, Mayor Joe Lockwood is absent.
All right, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, is there any public comment? Or no, approval of the meeting agenda. Any changes for anybody? All right, motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as read.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Okay. Is there any public comments, Stacy?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay. First presentation.
Can we read them, I'm going to sound the item. Consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to establish the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Milton for fiscal year 2020 and for other purposes. Agenda item number 19151. Bernadette.
Stacy, I have agenda item 152.
Oh, sorry, 152. You're correct. Sorry about that. And this is first presentation, so then we'll have a public, public hearing after this. She'll do, this is first presentation, so then she'll give, this is the first reading, right? First.
Yep.
Well, the first presentation, we approve.
We're supposed to approve.
Approve the first presentation as, as read.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make a post that we approve the first presentation as read by staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the public hearing and consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to establish the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Milton for fiscal year 2020 and for other purposes. First presentation was today, and at the special call meeting, this is agenda item number 19152. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We are here this morning to discuss setting the 2019 military. This is the first of three required public hearings, and we will go into the details of those requirements a little later in the presentation. First, I'd like to go over the agenda for this public hearing. We will talk about some important definitions, followed by the state's requirements for public hearings and advertisements regarding setting a military. Next, we will discuss some military options. Please keep in mind you can prevent any military up to the cap of 4.731. Following that, I will break down the digest by category and show the taxes that would be levied at each military, which will be followed by a discussion on the projected revenues for fiscal year 2020. After that, we will look at some of the ways property owners can reduce their tax liability, how to calculate a tax bill, and the value of your tax dollars to the city of Milton. Finally, in closing, we will discuss levels of service under the military options. So our first definition today is a mill is $1 per $1,000 of a property value, or .001 times your assessed value. Fair market value is the estimate of your market value determined by the Fulton County Board of Assessors. Assessed or taxable value is the assessed value which is equal to 40% of the fair market value. Property taxes are calculated by multiplying the military set by the assessed or taxable value and then adjusting for any exemptions. We also have the rollback rate. That is the previous year's military minus the military equivalent to the total net assessed value added by reassessments. And then what a military equivalent is, is the equation where the reassessments of real existing property are divided by current year's net digest and then multiplied by the prior year's military. While these definitions are kind of cumbersome, I have the math to go behind them a little later, so we can see that. So here are the three different public hearings that we have advertised. This morning at 9:00 a.m. is the first public hearing. Later on this evening at 6:00 p.m. we'll have our second public hearing, and then on August 12th, we will have the third public hearing as well as the vote to set the military. Anytime there's an increase beyond the computed rollback rate we just discussed, that requires and triggers those three public hearings. Here are the two ads that you have seen either in the paper or on the city's website. By state law, we have to post those. And then here are some of the numbers behind those ads. This is a snippet of the PT 32.1. That is the formula which we use to calculate the military equivalent and the percent increase in taxes. As you can see, the property tax digest has grown slightly in real and personal taxes, but the new CPI exemption has more than doubled the exemptions the city is seeing, creating a $141,446,951 reduction in the total net digest that is taxable property this year. So here's the math we were talking about behind those ads. On the notice of property tax increase, everyone saw 11.02%. These are the items that go into, we don't have to go over all the math right now. I'm going to post this up for the public to be able to review, so I thought it was important to have this there, but we don't have to go through every piece of the math at this moment. It is important to point out that had the military stayed at 4.731 last year, you would have seen a 3.02 increase this year as opposed to 11.02. So that's due to the fluctuation in the military, where last year we saw the large fluctuation was due to the reassessment of properties. So there's different items that go into that formula that could cause those increases. Then we have the five-year history and current digest. That's where you compare the overall net digest year over year to show the increase, and you'll see that the total overall increase was 2.4%. So this year, we decided to go with the formula we went with last year, showing a couple of different scenarios, so you can have some comparisons. We've decided to talk about the capped military of 4.731. That is capped by our charter. Then we have the current military of 4.390, as well as the calculated rollback military of 4.261. At the bottom of this screen, you'll see the separately calculated green space bond military, which is that variable rate that we calculate in order to cover the debt service due in the fiscal year. So that .588 will cover all the principal and interest payments due in fiscal year 2020. Here we have the MNO digest breakdown. The net digest, as you saw back on the other screen with kind of all the highlighted figures, is $2,690,495,162. We bill based on 100% collection rate, so this would be the taxes that were levied or will be billed at these different military rates. Later on, we'll talk about the projection we use to budget. It's a little different than the billing. So at a 4.731 military, we would levy $12,728,733. At 4.390, it would be $11,811,274. And at 4.261, we'd see $11,464,200. Here in this next screen, we're going to talk a little bit about revenue anticipations. So the city has historically seen about a 95% to 97% collection in year one. It's important to keep in mind that the digest is just the snapshot of a moment in time. It calculates everything based on appeals at this moment. We will have appeals that settle higher or lower, so that kind of fluctuates. So we use that 95% number to budget conservatively according to, excuse me, sorry, budget conservatively according to our ordinance requirements. Again, 65% has been the amount we've seen come in for personal property and about 50 for motor vehicle. The motor vehicle will eventually be zero. It's kind of phasing out. It's hard to peg because people have sold their cars since they've gathered those calculations a year prior. So at the very bottom, you will see that at 4.731 versus that 4.261 calculated military rollback is 11% increase. And if we went 4.39, there'd be a 3% increase. And then I gave you some data for FY19, just to keep in mind where we are at right now. The amended budget is calling for, for just real property, only $11,613,628, and to date, we've collected the $11,484,435. That number is pulled as of Friday. So here, we've gathered together the FY19 budget projections, which you will see in the final amendment that comes due in September versus what we are preliminarily projecting for FY20. With a 4.731 military, we will see a .9% increase in revenues overall for the general fund. So this I'll leave up for a moment, so you have a chance to look at it. That shows every category of revenue that we currently have expected for FY20 revenues. So now I'd like to go over some of the opportunities our residents have for tax savings. The city has various home set exemptions. The basic home set exemptions we offer are the primary residence, which you have no age or income restrictions. That is $15,000 off of your taxable liability. You apply for that at the county, and it trickles right over to the city. The same thing with the new floating home set exemption, which I have a next slide, I'll go over the math for that, because I know that's been important for people to understand. At the city here, we apply, we accept applications for senior exemptions as well. 65 and older with no income restrictions is an additional $15,000. 65 and meeting the income qualifications is $25,000. If you are 70 and older and you meet the income qualifications, the city gives you a full value exemption. You do not owe city taxes. The same thing for fully disabled persons meeting that income requirement. So here we have the explanation for the floating home set exemption, or the CPI, which some people may know it better by. This applies to your primary residence and the five contiguous acres of land around that residence. You take your base year, which is currently the lower of the appraised values in '16, '17, and '18. For those who sell their house and buy, it would be the adjacent previous year and the current year. And in 2019, that is multiplied by 1.0423, which represents the inflation rate data for December of '15 through December of '17. That rate will change to the lower of the consumer price index, or 3% in subsequent years, so that's where everyone has that understanding that your value of your home will not be taxed on more than 3% growth each year. So the adjusted base year for 2019, you take that base year calculation, multiply the, by the multiplier of 1.042. And the floating exemption would be the difference between your assessed value, which is your actual, what they're supposed to keep up with the market values, and your base year adjusted value. So down there, you can see the math, where if your home came in appraised in 2019 at $460,000, but back in '17, it was only at $340,000. You'd take that $340,000, multiply it by the multiplier of 1.0423. You would take that figure and multiply that by your 40%, and then the difference between the 40% of this year's appraised value at market and the base year appraised value is your exemption. So that exemption lowers your tax liability. You won't see the adjusted base value on your bill. You'll see the exemption on your bill. Does that make sense?
And Bernadette, that happens automatically. No one has to apply for that, right?
It is part of having the base home set exemption that you apply for at the county. So if you already have that $15,000 here with us, and I believe it's $40,000 at the, I'm sorry, I don't remember what is at the county level, but the basic home set exemption at the county level, then you are automatically going to be receiving this exemption at the city. So next, we have the COVA, which is your conservation use value assessment. If you qualify for this, your property value will be based on land use as opposed to market value. That kind of keeps those larger lots in a lower tax bracket, and it is for, you have no minimum, but you can only do it up to 2,000 acres. And of course, you have to agree for 10 years to keep the property in that same COVA category, so therefore, kind of is a promise that you will keep it in this rural state, and you will receive the tax deduction for that.
And the COVA is a county, is at the county level, but it passes then through for us?
You apply at the county, and then it comes through to us as a value decrease. That's correct.
In the tax digest?
You do not have to come up to us to apply for that. The only thing at the city level you have to come separately to apply for are your senior exemptions and your disability exemption at this time.
Okay, thanks.
So here, we have a little bit of math about calculating your tax bill. So take out the information about the CPI, and let's say we got down to a fair market value of $400,000. And then you would take that and multiply that times your 40% to get your assessed value. Then you'd decrease it by any other additional exemptions, and that's where you would throw in that CPI exemption if it applied, your senior exemptions, and all those types of things. And then you'd get your subtotal, then you multiply that times your military. So under the different three military rates we're talking about, this would be your tax liability on a fair market value of $400,000 with a, just a simple, basic home set exemption this year. So then we talked about, what is the value of that tax dollar, of that $686 you're paying to the city? What are you getting back? So with that same fair market value of $400,000, with $15,000 home set exemption, at 4.731 mills, paying $686, you'd pay that a year, and divide that out monthly, you'd pay $57.17, and daily, $1.88 for services such as public safety, courts, public works, parks and rec, community development, all the administrative functions under that, as well as our current Pago system that we fund. Those numbers are based on FY19's most recently amended budget. So here, we break that down a little differently by the military. So if you were to pay, if we were to choose 4.39, you'd pay $636.55. And if it went down to 4.261, $617.85. That kind of just shows the difference in the annual. So now we have the rationale for that 4.39 military, which is the one we're at right now, so maintaining our military. This allows the city to maintain existing base level services. There'd be no staff layoffs. There'd be minimum maintenance versus kind of more proactive or enhanced services. And we wouldn't really be able to address as many of the service level improvements that we'll be able to see with the next military. A variable military also, you know, gives us the ability to move away from a Pago strategy more towards bond funding. That is up to the council on what they'd like to do, but that is another option. So your rationale for 4.731, this would be the city's ability to fund capital improvement projects as currently planned, without having to further delay any of those timelines on those projects. We would have a timeline to implement the completed master plans that we've seen. Some of the challenges we have with this cap military is we have a limited commercial tax base and commercial zone footprint. The majority of cities have maybe a 40% to 50% commercial base. We have a 13% to 15%, so something to keep in mind. Assessed property values, we're not kept up with, and now that they are being kept up with, we have that floating CPI exemption that are capping them. So we're not having the ability to grow according to the actual values of the properties in our community in order to offset some of those things through legislation. Also, our community has a vision to retain its rural character, which kind of keeps that commercial footprint even more within its own zones. So those are just things to think about. Some cities, when there's an economic downturn, have the ability to increase their military. Our city doesn't have that opportunity to do that, because it can only go up to the cap. So that is one thing to keep in mind. And then also, if we defer short-term capital maintenance, that sometimes can have more costly impacts in the long term of capital replacements sooner than anticipated. So here we have current operations versus new initiatives. So the city's first priority is always to maintain existing operations and services. And once that is done and corresponding funds are allocated, we can move on to new initiatives and increased levels of service. Below, I've given an example of that as regards to road maintenance, so people can see a picture of what that means. With current operations, we can repave the roads as scheduled. Enhanced services would be able to repave additional roads that need attention above and beyond what the schedule called for, or maybe performing a full-depth reclamation as opposed to just patching and paving. A new initiative might be to construct an entirely new road to ease some congestion in a certain area. So those are the three things we look at every time we're budgeting. So now to get more into the details of service levels, we have the opportunity to increase service levels based on citizen feedback, as well as the ability to consider new initiatives. And here are some of the items that we've looked at in the FY20 budget to be able to increase levels of service. We have adequate maintenance of newly acquired green space properties, so we've taken on over approximately 350 acres at this point. So being able to maintain those in a way that keeps them mowed or hazards mitigated on the property, maintaining some of the trails that came with the property, would be an enhancement compared to what we had last year. We'd be able to improve debris management, so the curb and gutter that we've seen, as well as the right of way, would be able to improve the ability to keep those free of debris. More manicured landscaping in public areas is a thing we've heard a lot from some of the citizen feedback. Taking some of the more visibly viewable public right of ways and making them more tailored as opposed to rural landscaping. Enhanced public safety technology to aid in solving crimes, reduce crimes, and search and rescue capabilities would be able to be addressed. Timely implementation of some of our city plans. We've seen the Providence Park Plan, the former Milton Country Club Plan, as well as the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Those are all coming online, and those would need funds to be able to address the desires of the community. And we'd be able to grow the, mow the right of ways more frequently. We'd be able to look at capital contributions with, through our IGAs with the schools. So currently, we are able to utilize school fields, and in trade-off, we mow them, we irrigate them, and we do different capital improvements to them as the offset. We'd also be able to, like I mentioned earlier, repave additional roads. And then also, we'd have efforts to attract and retain highly talented workforce to meet the needs of the expectations of our community. So not only is that like a wage and salary option, but also turnover. When you have a tiny city, and maybe the staff is one or two in a certain department, turnover can really slow things down or stall things out. So we try to maintain our, our current employees. That is the story for this year's military. Do they have any questions?
Questions for staff?
Bernadette, the, we have a local office sales tax from Fulton County also, right, as far as projections for revenue incoming?
Sales tax?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I saw that we're expecting, you know, about $11 million for property taxes. What does the local office of sales tax bring us, and how has that been performing?
I'm going to go back to that slide for you. So sales and use tax, we have a slight growth here of about a half a percent.
Yep.
We are looking at, it has increased that loss, and what you see on your tax bill is we do an offset, so you'd kind of see what your military rate would be if we didn't have lost, and we needed the same revenue coming in, and then we reduce that. So in that advertisement, the five-year history, it shows that. You can see here, we're, to obtain the revenues that we're projecting, you'd need an 8.171 military rate if we didn't have lost, is basically what that's saying. Loss creates that gap of 3.44 mills for us at this time, so it's a very important piece of our revenue puzzle.
Big time. And so that is, we're seeing an increase in that though as well because of the economy currently, correct?
Right, everything's going well, and we're trying to keep an eye on that to gauge when and if it may come down. So we do conservatively increase it, but it is going down.
Now, we also use lost money also for some of our capital projects and things like that that we might need, correct?
Yes, so currently, we're on the Pago system. So what we do at this time is we set out all of our capital projects, and then we distribute kind of like a savings account for them until we have the ability to pay in full for that item. We have some other options. We did choose to go out for a bond to get the public safety building in place. There are some different options we can look at, but that is how the city currently does it. The additional revenues outside of continuing services go towards funding our capital agenda.
Okay. Gotcha. And so the, and last year, we did the 4.3 mills, right?
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. Okay. Those are my questions.
Sure, thank you.
Laura?
So an example of the Pago is City Hall, right? We use Pago money for City Hall?
That's correct. We saved up over the years, and then we were able to pay in cash for City Hall. No bonds were floated for this building.
And I just want to make a point. I'd love, thank you for this presentation. It was awesome. Can I get a hard copy of it?
Yes, I'm going to post this presentation on the city's website, and I'll send it to all of you right after this meeting.
Thank you. And just a comment about our green space. Just for the folks watching, we have a bond to buy green space. We don't have a bond, we don't have the funds, I mean, the types of funds to make the green space, you know, totally usable. So that's a factor that I'll be thinking about as we set this military, because I know that the people that are paying into that bond are really excited to start using what's, what's out there, and so that's a big factor for me.
And you'll see in the 2020 budget discussion we have, that we are going to propose moving some of the cell tower fees back over to maintain those properties, so we'll have an offsetting revenue. So we'll discuss that during the budget. That'll be the council's option to move that or leave it where it is. Thank you.
Rick?
And I guess to continue on that, that line, the funds, we talked about maintaining trails that are already there. And a person, Bentley, talked about how do we actually get those used. Is that something that Parks and Rec through Trail Plan would tell us what's out there? How we open it up so people could actually use that, and what it would be to maintain it?
Yes, I believe community development, Parks and Rec, and Public Works are working closely together right now through the community input of the former Milton Country Club Master Plan to determine what opportunities we have to open up that park. And they, I think they did a presentation last week, and they're moving forward with some of those decisions you guys have made.
Okay, and note, right now, we don't have anything as far as specific trails on other properties that we acquire. Okay, thanks.
I believe Lackey Road has a few trails.
Okay, yeah. But we haven't opened it up officially to say.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Bernadette. Could you give a couple of examples, maybe at three different assessed values of homes, of what the lower rate in this second rate, 4.7, I mean, yeah, 4.7, whatever, what it actually means to homeowners? 4.7 whatever, what it actually means to homeowners in terms of the difference? Maybe just pick three different.
I will put a few more on this slide for you. This is kind of our, the way the advertisement requires us to get the fair market value, the average fair market value from the previous year's digest, so that's what I based this slide on, and I can certainly add in a few other properties, and we can look at maybe talking about.
Yeah, I'd like to see what actually people would be impacted with.
Sure, certainly.
What is the last date that people should apply for the home set exemption with the county?
The counties is April 1st, and the cities is May 31st.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Any public?
Good presentation.
Any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All right, if that's, we'll get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.